This has to do with these people.
This is ending May 31st of 2020.
I appreciate that.
The community moved them away from just his comments.
I don't know. Because I guess you can do his comments. Because he turned it back, wants to turn that back before, after we're done.
You see updated? It says updated.
Yes. Should be a P, the only PDF it should be.
What's that? Did you make that? Yeah. Hold on a minute.
I'm with Mr. Gerald. I'm with you.
What's it settle?
I don't know.
Seventeen.
It's just, it's just us four folks. Open at seven o'clock.
All right. Appreciate you folks for coming. We are going to get into our budget hearing, a public hearing, and then into our agenda. It is seven o'clock. And it is Monday. All right. So we will, we're going to start with a few comments. I just want to make sure that, take care of a little housekeeping before we get into the budget hearing and into the public hearing. I'm sorry. She's about to be. Yeah, if you don't.
Is that okay?
Yeah, my, yeah, my comments will take care of it. Just slide it that way a little bit. That's good. Thank you, Josh.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right, so to begin with, I wanted to kind of go over some of the, some of the things that we haven't had a chance to kind of go over. We received an anonymous letter a couple of months ago. I'm not sure, did the council get a copy or no? It said that they had. I assumed y'all had, we hadn't talked about it. It's, it's not, it's not anything that needs our, our attention. It's really about folks were expressing their concern regarding the highway baseball field, or the facilities. Several things that they, they stated in here, and there's no way to contact them because they did not give us any information as to how to respond. So I felt like this would probably be the best thing to do, is to, is to do it this way. And, and after reading it, maybe there's other folks that may have some misunderstanding that we need to clear up as well. They did, they did say something that, to the, the fact that they've been here a resident of the city of Iowa. And they were concerning, they were expressing their concerns regarding the highway baseball facilities. They referred to Ragley, Grand Lake, Kentir, and other small towns. Specifically says it's an embarrassment to see the likes of the highway facility. Then they got into asking about how the bungee ball field came to life. Okay? Then it goes into, it's my understanding that CPPJ Parks and Recreation Department comes into play when it comes to the funds and maintenance of such facilities. There, there are no additional funds that come to the town through CPPJ. They wanted to know how we could increase the revenue of the town by getting better facilities for our park. They got into talking about the property, possibility of buying more property to build the facility. So there's a lot of things that they ask about here. And I know we have gone over this a little bit over the last couple of years as far as some of the things that we're trying to accomplish. We have, we have some property that has been, they wish to sell, it would help with parking. There's been a lot of different ideas that have been floated as to how we could actually bring about a new complex in town. Specifically for all recreation, not just baseball. So I know we've had quite a few conversations about it, but the, the main thing is, is if we have to have a plan, it's the same thing with the town and, and our capital outlays and, and things that we do with that. If we don't have a plan, we're just gonna, you know, we're gonna build something here today and then a couple of years later we're gonna say, hey, we need to add on to this and we'll do that. But if we lay out a plan, I think we'll have a, a better, a better chance of getting this thing done. I know there are quite a few people in town that have been here for, you know, all their life, gone to school here in Iowa, and really would like to see something a lot better than what we have. I agree. I think it is something that is highly needed, but I think again, it's just part of a plan to get it done. So I just wanted to clear some of that up. If anybody has any questions regarding any of this, we're here to take any phone calls, any questions or comments on it. The second thing that I have is I would like to, just very, very quickly, we're having, we're having folks that, I don't know if they've lost our phone numbers, and I say that as a joke, I know they haven't. But I'm going to just give you an example. This is, this is email from one individual in a very short time that chooses not to have a conversation regarding what, what's going on with this particular request that they have. In relation to that, we have three properties in town that have had issues. Some of them dating back 20 years, some of them 15. I think, I think some of them maybe even longer than that. And we're trying to work through our ordinances. We're trying to work through all the legal ramifications that come with these particular tasks. I would, I would highly recommend to folks to ask questions. Really consider the questions to ask. We don't mind helping, we don't mind giving the information out. We have three properties right now. One has already entered into our court system. We have two more that aren't on the docket to go into the court system. But we've taken this as far as the town can take it. But yet, we have folks who do these things and insist that we're not doing anything to, to help. And that's the furthest thing from the truth. The council sitting up here, they, they want these things taken care of just as much as, as I do, as well as the folks who are insisting on these things being done. I would recommend that if, for those folks that, who have not made the phone call, I would recommend that you refer back to ordinance 29-4 and, and then ask questions about why we have such a difficult time getting some of this stuff done. So I'm going to move on from that. Let's see. There are a couple of the things with the technical stuff that we've been doing over the last year and a half. Of course, y'all know that we had the breach, a lot of technology that we've had to update. The good thing about it is that we're pretty much set where we're at, and I think we're in pretty good shape for a, a good little while. So we won't be having a, a lot of the technology moving forward. So that's, that's a good thing. The additional point is economic development. Some of you may see, coming up in the budget, you're going to see a, a tab in there for economic development. I will tell you that there are a couple of different things that we're looking at in the future. We're not sure if it's going to happen. But if we are going to do a capital outlay that would happen to come with a grant for Safe Streets for All, is one of the things I'm looking at very specifically. We have to have some monies that we could use for our portion. And so holding that in that economic development, and it would be something that would generate economic development through these Safe Streets programs. So I'm really hoping that we can, we can get beyond that. If folks ask any questions about anything that might be a little odd there, just be, feel free to call and, and have a conversation with us. We'd really appreciate that. On, moving on to that, from that, is I would like to remind folks, this is a business meeting. I would like for you to understand that we, we're not interested in, in personal barbs. You're welcome to have conversations here. We want to make sure that we keep it businesslike. And at that point, we're going to go ahead and, and we're going to open this budget hearing. And the first thing we're going to have is Ms. Cindy is going to do a presentation of Louisiana Local Government Budget Act. Move that back over.
They have some copies here that, that the presentation, if anyone would like one. So first off, I would like to have a little laugh. So why did you let me go to school? You made more sense. And I'm going to go through this quickly. I, it's not anything, it's not a big issue, and I'm sure everyone is familiar with budgets as much. You're going to need to come sign in. Because I'm sure all of you have them at home, and you all have to, you know, try to watch what you're spending. This was actually prepared for us by Ms. Diane at the Legislative Auditor's Office. And these are just 10 steps, and they're easy steps, and it's just that we have started doing, started in April, around the beginning of April. And what we've done, this is the beginning of it, and this is the RS statute that we abide by under our Larson Act, because everybody has a government act that they follow. We're governed under the Larson Act, so we have to abide by this RS statute, and it is in this RS statute also. Our policy and procedures that we follow is the ordinance that will be adopted tonight, and that is our budget ordinance. We are required to adopt a budget annually on a, on a fiscal year basis for all of our funds, not just general funds, but we also have our, all of our funds. This is the action that we have taken so far is that the mayor is the chief executive officer. He prepared the budget. He prepared his budget message, and we have prepared the ordinance that we presented in May. We also did, submitted the public inspection budget was the, on May the 12th, when we had our meeting, it was presented. It's been at City Hall for public inspection. Since then, we publicized the notice in the official journal that we would be having our hearing today. And we are right now at our public hearing for the adoption. After the adoption, we will certify that we have complied with all of these steps. And if at any time after the budget is adopted, amendments can and should take place if there are changes. Number two is establish the budget calendar, which I know that's probably worn through you guys, but we usually, like I said, start in April. We count backwards. We know when it's due, it's due by June 30th to be adopted. So we know how many days we have to work on it, we know how many days we have to have it publicized, and we know how many days it's going to take for our meetings. So we have worked backwards, and we are where we are today. That's establishing our budget calendar. We've done worksheets. Our accountant has been very busy providing figures and numbers of prior years, expectations of what this year can be, and so we've developed a proposed budget. We did our first round draft by getting department heads together. They presented what their wants were. They presented things that they would need to do this year. Then we put that in with the revenues that we expected to get to be able to come down to a balanced budget. So we have arrived at a structurally balanced budget. The Louisiana Government Budget Act requires that total, excuse me, total proposed expenditures do not exceed the estimated revenues. So you get the revenues together and you say, this is what we have. What can we spend? And then you can go from there. We always have to live within our means. We can't overspend. It has to be budgeted by law. It has to be balanced. At the end, it's zero, no negatives. Then we have to make the hard decisions before we come to the bottom line and say, where, where can we cut? What, what can we do without? So. Our proposed revenues should be realistic, though. It's not good to overstate or overinflate our revenues. Then we end up probably in a mess with what I'm going to pull out of savings to be able to make ends meet. We have to consider increasing expenditures for inflation. So if we have things that we have to have, and we know the cost has gone up, then we may have to cut somewhere else so that we can afford what has become inflated. We have to be brutal during our financial distress, and right now, it seems like our economy is not what it used to be. These are some tips that the Legislative Auditor gave us on better budgeting. Sometimes you have to spend money to save money, such as labor-saving technology. Bringing in outside technology expertise to fill a staff knowledge gap if your staff isn't educated enough. Sometimes you do have to hire people who might, may know more about it than if your staff does. Some cuts will be temporary. Sometimes you have to have our short-term hiring freeze or cutting out state travel or spending cuts, just for a period of time until you can get back up on your feet. The same way as anybody else in their, in their private budget, you know? And then you focus on results and outcomes. So the mayor assembled the budget based on what we've given him. He prepared it based on spreadsheets, clearly presented side-by-side comparisons for general fund and all of our other special revenue funds that we have. Getting current, we had the proposed budget, the current year-to-date actual, and the current year projected, with a percentage change between the proposed budget and the current year projected. These are all things that have been done to be able to get where we are with our proposed budget tonight. We, the mayor prepared the budget message. I believe he read it last meeting, and it is attached to our budget document. We do have our description of proposed financial plan, our policies, our objectives, our assumptions, and our budgetary basis. So our budget adoption is for tonight. It has been prepared. If at any time that that budget needs to be amended, it will go through a similar process, but not so much of the publicized dates that we are required to do as a, a that we are required to do as a, of regional budget. Tonight, we will seek the public's input on it. The hearing has to occur before the budget can be adopted. So it will be adopted before we hear what everyone's thoughts and suggestions are. And then the budget has to be adopted before June 30th. That is a requirement. If, if for any reason it is not, then it goes to a 50%. This is all. This is in case that we have to amend the budget at any time. The 50% rule. The budget is not adopted by June 30th, the town is forced to go to a 50% of the amounts appropriated in the last adopted budget. So we encourage open discussions. We encourage everyone to express their concerns. And it can always be amended at any time during this whole year that our revenues come in, that we say, we have more money, we can spend more money. But the, the big thought here to me, I find, is recurring expenses should never, ever be used... With a one-time revenue. If you have a one-time revenue, you don't base it on, that is used for capital expenditures alone. So we, we need to try to put that on the mind. That concludes...
All right, at this time, we're gonna open it for questions and comments. Just remember, if you wish to speak, we'd like for you to come forward to the microphone. Please state your name clearly. That way, Ms. Cindy can, can document that for the record. Chief, would you like to start?
I'll be brief. We got, what, two minutes?
Not, not.
Not for you. But you, you have, you have time, Chief.
Just like to say, revised statute 3343 states that in the law that an elected chief is required to make recommendations to the council and to the mayor in an open, public meeting. I've sent y'all the specifics. I'm not gonna read all that, but I hope, and I'll highlight a few points to understand the interpretation of the law. And we have, we're blessed to have our family attorney. He can answer any of those. So that being said, before I get into my feedback on the budget, respectfully request that each and every one of you, as a councilman, are obligated to follow the law as lit. And I've been advised that I'm to come, the law says I am to come before you, prior to the meeting, to request to be added to the agenda. So that is what I'm doing. I'm, I'm following the law when the mayor does not put me on the agenda as requested. There's a statute that says he controls the agenda, and I'm fully respecting that statute. But I'm also asking you to respect the statute for an elected police chief. I am elected. I'm elected just like each and every one of you. And there are rules that govern what I have to do to take appropriate actions. So that's why I'm here. And respectfully, after this meeting starts, I strongly request that you follow this law, make a motion. What I'm asking is make a motion and give me the opportunity as prescribed by this law to come up here. I had an agenda sent on a timely manner to be posted on the agenda so that I could be listed on the agenda as an elected chief. And I respect that. You have that information. You can vote and give me that opportunity as prescribed by law. And I follow that. Any questions to me? Y'all, I hope y'all, I hope, I did highlight it, so y'all... I'm ready for a budget. I've requested numerous times, numerous times to be placed on the agenda for meetings prior to tonight and have been denied by the mayor in reference to the budget. Public safety is paramount. Last year, we started losing officers due to some cuts made on benefits prior to that and a consistency in no color raises. And we've been told year after year, next year, we gotta see what it does. Well, we're being told that again. It is frustrating. We saved money in the budget last year due to working a tremendous amount of overtime, being shorthanded. This allowed the town not to pay benefits, thus saving a lot of money. That's why our budget wasn't over. Let me tell y'all right now, because we weren't paying our benefits. And we were working officers six, twelve, seven, eight. Burning them out and tiring them out. Cutting the police department budget for absolutely no reason. This is my opinion, just I do not understand and makes no common sense. And I also am gonna ask to be placed on the agenda after you, should you approve this budget? So I can discuss in more detail on where we do have money to take care of this situation for the police department. And also, good point, when you said you need to spend a little more on equipment, statistically retention in law enforcement. Keeping officers that you've invested a lot of funds in, you might wanna spend a little extra because it saves a lot of money into alone. That's all I have. Thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Yes. I'm Miranda Creella, and I am very worried about the funds that are coming for the police department. I've lived here my whole life. And for us not to get the security of knowing that everything that y'all are investing money in the parks and all this stuff, us in our homes and stuff, with, with the cut of the law enforcement, who put their life on the line every day, and they're not getting paid any, hardly nothing. And so where are we gonna end up, like Welch? With crime rate up high and stuff? I mean, it's, it's just, it scares me because I own my home. I will be here forever. So, I mean, I, I ask that y'all please consider that. Y'all, y'all are local as well. Who's gonna protect us?
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Mr. Josh.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Mr. O'Kay, clerk. And you are, I'm sorry?
Tracy Fonten. Administerative Assistant. The mayor.
My name is Joshua Maser. In this awesome presentation, we had highlighted on the points that were obviously gonna be contentious tonight. We had times of financial crisis, we need to be prudent. And I'm very sorry to address this to you, but to my knowledge, you are in a new, fairly new position here, correct?
Correct.
As his personal or administrative assistant?
Yes, that's my title.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I know that you're here a lot. I see, I see, I see our want.
Can you stick to the budget, please?
Yes, this, this is about the budget. We just got preached at for that, so if you will, please. This has been in my two minutes, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate it. Like I was saying, is that, and like I said, it's not a personal attack on you, but I do have questions because, well, our salary is in the budget. So this is on topic. I did see that for the administration budget, that it did go down this year versus last year, which is great. But that being said, a brand-new position for a part-time mayor, regardless of how much time that you come in, that should argue against the fact that you need an administrative assistant due to the amount of the work that you are putting in here that I said. And this is not a mockery tactic, this is business meeting, okay? So we might wanna reconsider that. Secondly, I do have a question. What is the $16,000 set aside for the tourism grant? And marketing? It's a wide range of those in the budget, I believe.
It's a grant we get every year for different events that we do in the, in the town. So that comes from...
So that's, is that matching?
No, no. They, that's, that's strictly just something that they give us and we do...
So that...
Commerce market, we do any expenses that we do throughout the year.
Okay. Because I, I thought we were paying for some of our grants. I was gonna do, I'm coming, man, I've offered you guys that so many times. My next point, two months ago, about two blocks from our house, there was a murder. I'm out there every day. I don't even let my kid freaking walk that street alone. It's in your district, Ms. Gilley. I don't think it's prudent, I don't think it's wise to propose a decrease to our police force completely. And I am not here, I do not know, not in your position, so I don't know what brought you to that. And I'm not gonna pretend I know. But I do know that as a leader too, you shouldn't be proposing cuts to our safety without being willing to take an equal percentage proportional cut to your own salary, Mr. Mayor. The same to you, Council, if you do choose to approve that. Because obviously, we all know, because it was highlighted in that, that the budget can be amended, so on and so forth, in an attempt to try to dissuade anyone from coming up here to argue that fact. But I just want you guys to be cognizant of that fact too. And please, moving forward, y'all do represent us. And I don't know if you guys are contacting all your constituents or waiting for them to contact you. There's pretty decent amount here tonight. And I would challenge you to please listen to what we have to say and take it into consideration. I know that you're in a rock and hard place, and we all are. Like I said, I don't know the reasons why it is. But if you have to make hard decisions as a leader, sir, I encourage you to lead from the front and you take it with you too. And I don't think you'll have a problem with that. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My mother did, I said, lives here. I couldn't hardly hear what he was saying, but I will make sure. I've lived here probably 60 years, no, since I've been five. I know that there's 72 new housing coming up. I also know that we have not ever had enough police to patrol our town. I also know we do not need to defund our police department. We need to fully staff our police department. We've had a couple of deaths this week. They've had extra work this week while they stayed in front of my house eight hours. I don't know who was patrolling the town. But it wasn't their fault. It was not their fault. It was mostly a shortage of police department. My daddy was the first deputy sheriff that lived in Iowa. How did you pay a sheriff's department? My daddy was also the first Iowa patrolman. My daddy worked Bell City Hays in Iowa. So he really had a job. And he worked, he worked almost 24/7. No policeman can work that many hours a day. It's especially since no insurance, not enough money, can't support his family. He has to have a second job most of the time. And don't, most of the policemen probably do have a second job. I know a couple that do. They're my neighbors. So I'm begging you, I'm begging you not to defend the police department. Defund something else. Defund yourself. Defund the mayor. Do not defund the police department. Thank you. Because there's 72 new, new housings that we don't know who we're getting. We do not know. They could be rich, they could be poor, they could be criminals, they could be the best person we've ever had. So please, do not defend the police.
Joey Mathis, last week is real short. If you look back at the 22 to 23 budget, to the proposed budget that's current, there's a 67% increase in the administration side. Over the, over those years, from the 22 to 23, 23 to 4, so on and so forth, there was very minute changes in the police budget. But yet, from 22 to 23, we're going from $1.9 million on the police budget to $1.6 million on the police budget. Yet the administration is going up. I know there's a small decrease this year, but there's been large jumps over the course of the last few years. My question is, is any of the council members, Ms. Mayor, you come to my house when I gotta call at 2:00 AM? Have cops show up? Anything so? Thank you.
Thank you, young man. Anyone else ever come? Yes, ma'am.
I can't walk up there, so I'll just say my name. And I know you can all hear me because I was praying to speak loudly. If you defund the police, you put us in jeopardy. Look what's going on in the United States. And you think it's just big cities? We don't know what's coming. Do not defund the police. Cut yourselves, Rose.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name's Austin Peliquin. I'm the executive officer of the Iowa Police Department. Just wanted to say thank y'all for giving me the opportunity to come up here and talk. I've actually prepared a little speech to give to y'all, but I don't think I can say it individually. People here are upset. I do wanna offer one thing to all of you and to everybody in this room. If y'all question the direction this department's going, or the state that we're in right now, come get in for us. Come do a ride-along. Come spend 12 hours with us one night. When you're going from call to call to call, when you can't answer the next call coming in, or when you don't have backup. Come see what it's like. You eliminate all the rumors, all the hearsay, and you get to see firsthand what we deal with, the equipment that we have, and our needs. I'll offer to y'all, if y'all wanna come ride with me, I'd be more than happy to show you. And I know that any guy that works for me would be more than happy to take y'all and show y'all everything we do. We can start tonight, we can do it tomorrow, whenever. I ask y'all to come see for yourself before you make any decisions on the budget.
Thank you, young man. Yes, sir.
I'm Jonathan Richfield. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Appreciate you guys doing all this and what you do. I'd also like to reiterate about the police cuts. I was actually digging a hole in my yard when I heard about this, and I dropped everything that came out here, so I apologize for how I look. But that's how important it is for what's going on here. I'd like to bring up some other points that are important as well. I think that you mentioned economic development, which brings more people. If you've got more people, you have more problems. That is no doubt about it. Whether it's a good problem, like somebody's doing something criminal, or they just need help from the police. So bringing up economic development, you're gonna need more police, and it makes no sense to cut them. I just heard 72, 72 new developments. That, that's a lot of people to bring in there too as well. I, I heard about that hurt shooting on Third Ave. That should be evidence right there for you. There's definitely drug use in town. We have still a fentanyl and drug use problem in the whole nation. That is not something that's not here in town. I'd like to say it's easy to make cuts as well, but it's hard to ask for police back. So once you cut those things and trying to get people back is a lot harder than just slashing. I know baseball fields are great and all, but they only benefit a few people. Police benefit everyone. I'd also like to bring up too, that if anything happens where a police officer makes a mistake, one thing they might be looking at in an investigation is work-rest ratio. And if they find that this person has been overworked, you might be opening up your all-yourselves for a lawsuit. So that would take away a lot more things that maybe are in pursuit as well. Another thing I'd like to bring up too is that we live on the I-10, which is a corridor for drugs and human trafficking. Every I, every place on I-10 that I've lived has been bad. And we are not, you know, not subject to that as well. And I'd like to reiterate that people are your best investment, not, you know, ballparks and robots and all that stuff. I don't care about any of that. You invest in your people, you will be successful. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Josh. Thank you, Mr. John. Anyone else?
This is over to the council. I have to say something that was mentioned earlier, and I've thought about this, and this is only my opinion. I don't think the increase in salaries for the mayor or the council is relevant right now. We meet once a month, although we are available twenty-four hours a day to our constituents. I think the pay that we receive is pretty good for what we do. I like to be here once a month. I have no problem with going a raise this year. I cannot speak for my other councilmen. I will say that the seventy-two more units, I think, was voted for, and I did vote for that. Increasing the people in town is also going to increase sales tax, which is also going to help fix streets, fix border issues, things like that. It's going to be distributed. So, yes, I did vote for it, and, but yes, I do agree that we do not need to defund the police department. I will not be voting for that tonight.
Yes, sir.
I'd just like to say, for that new development, I think the majority of the town wasn't born there. I mean, we don't have anything to offer, seventy-two more families, other than a couple grocery stores and a Mexican restaurant.
Okay.
And that's just, and we know what's coming in there, that's all going to be government assistance, so it's just like that, something on the west side of town. So, this is all, this is it. This is all we got. You guys are under tech, they don't have current equipment, they don't have enough staff. I mean, they need more money, they need better tech, they need better equipment, all the way around.
Thank you, sir. I didn't catch your name.
Al Manella.
That's right. Any other questions? I'd like to add something, too. This, ultimately, for me, I think part of my role is to help navigate two different sets of numbers. It's like I reached out, you know, because I'm clueless, I don't have any idea of what law enforcement is, I've never worked it, no education in it, so I asked, Chief, hey, man, what's the proper, what's the appropriate stat? What does that number need to be? Our decisions, our justification for our decisions, it's really helped out when we get those explanations. Whether this is inflammatory or not, we never got, we never got those numbers. And I can sit here and I can crunch your numbers and come up with what makes sense to me. We have a chief, we need to have four administrators, eight patrol officers is the bare minimum, we probably should be at ten, have some floaters, four dispatchers, really needs to become five. I can do that, and I did, and I sent it out there, and that's including, and I don't know what you guys make per hour, you know, but on average, I can do some numbers. So, some of the numbers that I use is an average patrol officer making fifty-five thousand dollars a year pre-post, an administrator making sixty-five thousand dollars a year pre-post. Now, those are not perfect numbers, because I'm using old budgets and I'm doing the best I can, so I'm sure that they're a little inflated. But like, we have an opportunity to do some pretty good stuff. So, what I did is I used chiefs, personnel, at least best I could tell, appropriate staffing, with what I think a reasonable living wage should be. And I coupled that with the mayor's expenses, so non-personnel expenses, fuel, things like that, and I really think that the two sides are not that far off. When we look at it and like, kind of cut out the excitement that goes with it, I think we're a lot closer than it seems like. So, I just want to say that I reached out to chief, I reached out to the mayor, both of them had conversations with me, and very good conversations, I'll add. So, I just want to say that I don't think we're as far off as it may appear to be, at least from the beginning of this conversation. And that's police department specific. The rest of the budget, like, I do, I think the mayor's putting a lot of effort into all of those things, so I don't think he's coming at us with a superficial or a hack-up budget. And I want to say that very clearly. I think he's putting in more effort than a lot of people maybe give him credit for. And that's all I have for that. I think defunding the police is a very, very strong word. I think it's a very, it's a, it's a term that is tossed about lightly. It's a catch-all now to get opposition to whatever it is that folks want to push. I see that happen over and over again in our country. Folks, this is not about personal. This has nothing to do with individuals in this room, has nothing to do with anything other than dollars and cents. I want to take you back, excuse me?
Then cut it off, I do.
Okay. Chief, what's our rule? What's our rule here?
Let's please be recognized to speak. Let's, did he address you?
He looked dead at me and said, "What was that?" I said something unright.
Chief?
He recognized me.
Chief, can you have it removed, please? He knows we're on the top. But... In regards to the dollars and cents, we talked about, or a couple of things that we've noticed over time, is we've had funds depleted as far as our savings. I know at some point in time, we had nearly one million dollars in our general fund lamp. That was prior to me coming in. It's very, very difficult to replace funds in general fund. Those are funds that really need to be there for emergencies, and they had gotten depleted. Before I came in, over four hundred thousand dollars was used to make payroll out of lamp. The first, I think it was Jan-, February, maybe it was February, the first, I came in in January, February, we had to, it looks like three hundred and forty-five thousand out of a lamp to cover payroll. Our issue is not about whether or not these young men and ladies, yeah, there's Christine. It's not about whether they're worth it, or whether we, you know, it's not that we don't want to have a shortage of police officers. Where do we get the money? It's really about the money. It's not anything personal. But when we stop and we look at it, if we take, if we take, we've got six hundred and forty-five thousand, I think, in lamp, in general fund? Is that what it is, Myri?
Yes.
So, we have six hundred and forty-five thousand in lamp. If we were to take, and no disrespect to your budget that you had got with Myri, oh, chief, you're asking for two point three million. So, if we were to do that, we would pretty much be taking that six hundred and forty-five thousand dollars out of lamp to do that this year, to cover that budget. If we do that, those are recurring expenses. So, what do we do next year? Where do we get the other? I mean, because if you're going to do that at six hundred and forty-five thousand this year, where are we going to take? Excuse me? Excuse me?
Lamp. She doesn't understand what lamp is.
Okay. Lamp is our savings account, okay, for the general fund. So, if we take that money out this year, what happens next year? Where do we get the money from? The only way that we can correct the problems we've had in the past is what we've been doing on the administration side, making a lot of cuts, bringing things back into line. We were able to take care of the five hundred thousand dollar deficit that we had in the last two years. We are now on a lot better footing. This is the first year that Kaukaishu Parish School Board has reduced, since I've been in office, and I think in the last four or five years, it's the first time that Kaukaishu Parish School Board has reduced the amount of revenues they anticipate for the town of Iowa. Since I've been in office, we have reduced from what they anticipated we were going to get. And we have been able to, with the help of Ms. Cindy and other folks, Myri, looking at the numbers, looking at what's happened with our financials side of things, what's going on in town, it's very, very difficult for us to say, "I'm going to inflate the revenues because I need to cover these expenses." If we inflate a revenue that we have no hope of attaining, we're setting ourselves up for failure. It's just common dollars and cents. That's all it is. So, when we look at it, we have to be able to figure out, how can we do this? I know there's some pushback on economic development. The one thing that I keep talking about when it comes to business, and Mr. Kevin Fix, I appreciate you being here, and you can attest to this, I know, the one thing that makes things better is the next sale. I mean, that's the matter, that's what happens when we have a strong economic driver in town. When we start picking up more of those, that cures what ails us. We need more revenue. There's no two ways about it. We have to have more revenue. The police department needs more revenue. The administration side need, we're running shorthanded, we have since I've been in office. We have people that are wearing three hats. Myri, how many do you wear? Two, three? So, basically, what we have is, we are trying to navigate getting us into a position where we can see those revenues pick up. We're not trying to, we're not trying to put anybody on the hot seat here. All we're trying to do is to make sure that we do not spend more than we take in. To be very, very clear, I will tell you that the comments, I shouldn't say comments, but the proposed budget that I gave out last month came with a cover letter, just like this. It went to all the council, went to the attorney, it went to chief. The last line, and again, I want you to understand, this is nothing personal, the last line in this says, "If the requested general fund budget moves forward," and that's the one that chief proposed, "I will need to know what services and/or capital outlay projects need to be cut." It's simple. It's very simple. Not one person has come to me and said, "Hey, let's cut these services, let's cut this outlay project." I have a responsibility to everybody in this town to provide a balanced budget. That balanced budget is done on the backs of the revenue that is projected to come into the town with known expenses. It's a matter of addition, subtraction, that's all it is.
And I'll add that, that there's a partially unfair comment there, because I tried to initiate that with an email, but we didn't get to that secondary part, and that's not totally directed at the town. That's an overarching thing. Couldn't get to that conversation because we can't figure out what exactly is appropriate staffing, what exactly is this, what exactly is the wage, what's the salary spend? But I tried.
So, I'm going to move it, and yes, you did, and Daniel did reach out to me, email. Again, I keep, I keep, I'm kind of old school. I like to have conversations. It's a whole lot easier to accomplish more with a conversation than going back and forth in email. He and I had that conversation, we came to an understanding, and I think we're in a better place for that, and I appreciate Daniel's candor on it. As I get into some of the other things, I would like to say, the general fund is comprised of administration, police, municipal court, fire administration, and community center. It is funded by revenues received from fines, licenses, permits, rents, franchise taxes, and a percentage of sales tax, too. The proposed budgeted expenditures are set forth according to the revenues received produced by the legally authorized funds. It's just some of the things I just went over. Each sales tax that we have was done so passed by the individuals of this town. Each proposition that went before, folks, they voted on. Each proposition has its own set of rules and regulations. As we talk about some of these funds that we have, for some time, there's been a habit to do a certain thing, moving money from fund to fund, and yet, the more we review this, the more we see that we may be restricted to a particular fund to move money into general fund. So, we have to be very careful with this. These are some of the things that I said when I came in, that I wanted to fix, what may be broken. This may be one of those things we're going to find out fairly shortly. But basically, what we're looking at, prior to 2023, the percentage amounts for general fund was fourteen percent. And you look at sales tax one, we had thirty-two percent, sales tax two, twenty-six percent, and sales tax three, twenty percent. So, that's how it's kind of broke up into parts at eight. So, when we look at fiscal year 23, 24, general fund went up to twenty-three percent. We had to have an increase. Fiscal year 24, 25, we had another increase in general fund. So, we were taking funds from other accounts to take care of the deficits that we were working on. We had a lot of increases in insurance. When we go back and we look at 2023, our total insurance cost, seven hundred and forty-three thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars. Anybody got a guess as to what it went up to last year? I know everybody's insurance went up. I've seen it personally at home. In 2024, nine hundred and fifty thousand, oh-five-four. That's a lot of money. Guess where that's coming from? General fund. This year, our insurance went up again for healthcare. When I call around and talk to other folks throughout Kaukaishu Parish, or Jeff Davis Parish, it doesn't matter, I try to find out what's going on when it comes to insurance. We're probably one of the few that are left that do not ask employees to contribute to their health insurance programs. Other municipalities have already made that change because of the cost. Again, I'm not here to try to... Again, I'm not here to try to make any of this personal. It's about where do we get the dollars to do what we need to do? If we can, if we, and I'm gonna I'm gonna take a step back, if y'all don't mind. Y'all know the Waffle House is coming, right? There are other things that are coming that I can't legally talk about because there are NDAs in place with other folks. And when that stuff does come out, it could present a problem for the people who are trying to come in. I can tell you this. There are four other businesses that are on their way in. That revenue is gonna be what fixes what we have a problem with on our budget. But we can't get ahead of that. We can't use money that we don't have today. We can use money when it comes in. So I'm I'm not quite sure. I know Waffle House is moving up their date as to the start time. That's gonna be an additional revenue. I know we're gonna have a little bit coming in off of the lease that that we secured through the lawsuit. So there are things that we are continuing to do. But the one thing that can help more than anything else is that economic development. Economic development brings in more businesses. More businesses bring in more revenue. More revenue goes into the pot that we can pay and to have fully staffed police department and administration. So I I think as we look at it, we just have to be very, very careful about it. Again, I'm gonna go back to the same thing. Some of you have been in this room when I have called for conversations about the budget. I'm not referring to the council. Okay? I've asked chief several times to sit down and talk with me about the budget because we have a very specific problem. And it's not him. It's not the police officers. It's the dollars and cents. So again, I am I am going to just stipulate at this point. I am I'm in agreement with some other folks I spoke with that I think the best thing that we can do is to have that conversation. Where chief and I can sit down and we can we can talk about this. How do we get there? What do we do? I think as it stands, so that we don't get into problems when it comes with the Louisiana Legislative Auditors, that we we move forward with the budget that we have on hand. Again, knowing that we, and this is the caveat, we have a conversation about our budget. Literally sit down and go through the numbers, line item by line item, and say, how can we address this? Let's get to a reasonable point. Things come through during the year with the revenue. It's very, very simple for us to then come back to the council. Let's amend the budget. Let's put more money into the fund. And what else can we do? So I think there's some other some other avenues as well. But again, I think I think the conversation between chief and I regarding the budget is very, very helpful. And I would like to see that happen here in the next couple of weeks, if at all possible. Again, I think we just need to move forward with that particular deal. Any other any other questions? Yes, ma'am.
Gallow Johnson.
Ms. Johnson, thank you.
A couple of years ago, when you came into office, in some of the council meetings in the beginning, there we were, the town was actually paying staff from the savings. Is that still going on?
No, ma'am.
Cindy gave reports every month. We were in the red forever. And we're getting out of it slowly, but we're taking money out of savings to operate this town. So I need to know as a resident here.
Yes.
Are we still living on the savings?
No, ma'am. No, ma'am. That's what I was just saying earlier. The the last time we took anything out of savings, I'd taken office in January. February was the last time that any of that ever happened. I wasn't made aware of it until we had to borrow money from Lamp to pay wages.
So the budget that you have prepared is something that whatever's in general fund is there? I mean, the general fund is now out of the red? Am I hearing that correctly?
General fund has never paid back the money that it's used in the past. There's no way for it to. Because because general fund, generally, your general fund is gonna be recurring expenses. That's where all your your payroll's coming from the police department, from the administrative department. There's no way for it literally to pay itself back. Because that general fund is reliant on all our other funds. So we can, oh, I say all the other, sales tax too. More specifically, that's how we get funds into general fund to accommodate what we're trying to do with our general fund. Does that make sense?
Yes.
If I if I wasn't clear, please let me know. I'll I'll try again.
No, it makes sense.
Okay.
So in the beginning of your tenure, when we talked about having to take money out of savings, but we're gonna put that money back. So we we pass that. We're not doing that. We can't do that, right?
We we have. We have in all the other funds because we were able to cut out the expenses and cut all those other funds back. So everything, sales tax one, two, three, and parks and waterworks, we've been able to pay those back. All right? So we have we have a general lamp fund, a general a general fund for lamp. Then we have sales tax one, sales tax two. They may have a different name to them, but it's all those different. So each each fund has a savings account. Okay? We can't interchange those at at will. And those are for emergencies. Okay? We wanna make sure that we can we can make our capital outlays happen so that we generate that economic development that creates the revenue stream, that provides the income that we need to pay for our police officers and our administrative staff. So the more we can do that, the better off we're gonna be. The more we pull together as a community to get these things to happen, the the sooner we're gonna get to a point where we're all gonna be saying, hey, I'm glad we fought through this, but here we are. We're we're doing good now. And that's really what it is. We we are doing, we are doing well in a lot of our funds. Correct. Yes. General fund, general fund is okay at this point. I think we're, is it 90, 94, 96?
Not like 93 in a deficit.
Yeah, 93 in a deficit right now. But we don't have the sales tax for this last this last month. Once that comes in, we're gonna probably be pretty close. But that's the best we've run, you know, in a while.
So we're still living on the edge.
General fund will always live on an edge until we can generate enough revenue to to counter that. It's it's, again, because of the fact I'm required to give a balanced budget. I can't get, I can't give an inflated budget. Okay? I have to make sure that I stay within a certain realm. I mean, I think we're probably $60,000 difference maybe between school board, what they projected. Maybe it's 100, somewhere in there, is what they projected. And that came down. But we had already set ours before they came down. They were late this year getting us a projection. But we're within, we're within, I'd say, 60 to 100,000 of the projection. We're a little bit lower than that, which if it comes in, great. I mean, we we can amend the budget at that point. We can put that revenue back in there. But as I said in our last meeting, it's 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 really beneficial for us to err to the side of caution and not spend our future. It really, it really boils down to that. I'm, I tell you, I I put a lot of work into trying to get a lot of things coming into town. We have a lot of momentum. I wish there was a lot more I could say about it. I'm not trying to be elusive. There's just so many different moving parts that if we mention certain things, it could it could present a problem. We don't want that. We want that, we want the best for the community. So that that's really where we're at with it. But the general fund will always, and look, the police department will, no knock on the police department, guys are gals. But the police department will never be able to. No police department, no law enforcement office at all. Even fire department will never be able to exist solely on what they do. Okay? It's always gonna require funds outside of what they can produce. I know a lot of times, you know, we talk about tickets. But really, and we don't wanna be the speed trap either, right? We don't wanna be, what was the town?
We are a speed trap. We all know it's safe. We'll just go our way after the speed.
But we but we do realize, we do realize that that the police department will never be able to be self sustaining. That's that's not missing on any of us. And we know that we have to, we have to figure this thing out. And I think I think it's always best if we can do it together.
Okay. That's great. I just know where we were, if we were still operating in the red and take money from here and there.
Yeah, no, we're, we're good. Yeah, no, we're we're good. And and we're not, we're not borrowing from anything to make payroll.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it, Ms. Johnson. Yes.
Do I need to stand again, sir?
Well, only only for the microphone. Only for the microphone.
I'm not gonna be mean. Look, it really sounds like there is a solution here really close, y'all. But in the interim, please, again, I understand everyone's responsibilities. I know it, it's hard. If we are hopeful of increased revenue where it is going to be a non issue if everything goes well, the town survived before running out of deficit in the general fund to make sure the payroll can be made. That way, no one gets, they can just spend it a little bit to make a little bit more. You don't wanna have to be replacing all of these officers. You don't want people to move out of town because it's not safe. I'm not suggesting, you know, kids, I know things have gotten better, but occasionally, and we're to make sure that we don't inadvertently disrespect or squirrel to the people who are ultimately helping towards generating revenue by providing a safe town for businesses and residences. It might be something that the council, since I know they have to bring it to you now with the option you have, y'all, please consider other options. Or staggering capital outlay programs is a stagger step. We don't have to do everything all at once. We can look along where all these individuals here are not gonna suffer. And I please and thank you to take that into consideration. I really think all y'all are close. I think y'all are doing as best as you know how, and I do appreciate it.
Thank you, young man. Mr. Fix?
I just wondered who's gonna cover burdens and services.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
I wanna make it clear and real positive. I believe purple. And all of y'all know I believe purple. I've been believing purple most time, not red. I want our way to grow. Our way is growing. But I also, and I know, I don't think everybody knows, but everybody knows what's coming. Byway talks. I'm so glad that things are coming. But we also got to remember that y'all have families, we have families. We want it to grow. But we also want it to be safe. That's all I'm asking, to be safe.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Gabrielle Lauer. I actually looked over the budget through the last couple of months. And I've been coming to the town council meetings for a while. And I've been in school. And so I haven't been able to meet all of the meetings. I watch online. I'm so thankful that we have the cameras and stuff to be able to do that for those opportunities. And I am very thankful for the new things that we have, like the farmer's market. And I think that that is really helping the town and bringing like community together. That to say, I feel like I am also beating a dead horse, saying that I don't want the police budget to be cut more. But also, there are like, like you said, the capital outlay. I walk here in town. I moved here about three years ago, me and my husband. And we wanted to start a family here. So of course, I want it safe. And our neighbors, their kids play outside every single day. I'm like, do they ever watch TV? Probably not, because they are outside from when the sun comes up. So of course, I want the town safe because I want my kid to be able to do that too. And that's a lot of the reason why we moved here is because really, there's no one here that's ever said, oh, yeah, highway's bad town. They don't have police protection. You know, we moved from software, and there's just a lot of incidents over there that we just do not care for. Police just was not available like they are here. And I'm so thankful for that. But with chief saying that he's worried that we might not have that continuously, especially with the new builds, it's a big concern. And like I said, I feel like I'm beating a dead horse. But when looking at the capital outlay, you have baseball fields for $40,000. You have the equipment for $40,000. That's to replace bleachers, storage, and batting. And then you have land acquisition for $70,000. So you have a total of 150,000 there. I don't think that that's unreasonable. I love the baseball parks. Our friend, his son plays baseball. And so we go there. But you know what we do? We bring chairs. And the bleachers would be great. I also think that I feel better protected than sitting on a bleacher. I'll just bring all the chairs in the grass. Again, I know that this is all to be prior talk to. And I do reach out to Ms. Julie often and tell her how I feel about things, even though I don't come up here and speak. I wanna go through those courses of action because she's a council member. And I'm thankful because we elected her. And I'm thankful that she's there and she's always answering. And I just send a text message. And I know that if she's busy, she'll get back to me later. And so again, I know it's beating a dead horse. But I would like that budget to be looked at in the sense of, okay, do we really need bleachers this year? Or can we get that 40,000 for another police officer to be hired on? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. I will, I will say that, you know, we still, we still have funds that have come in. It trickles in from FEMA for the replacement of the things that we have in the park. And part of that is some of that stuff we still haven't finished from FEMA. So as I, as I do respect your comments on those particular items, a lot of that is leftover from FEMA. We need, we need to replace some of those things that we've we've lost during the hurricane. I know, I know one of the hardest things that I had to understand coming into this job is that, you know, as as some of us that have been in business before, we we tend to operate at our speed. Municipal government is slow. There ain't no two ways about it. All right? Things that we would like to get accomplished this year, we may not see any of it get accomplished. I don't know. We don't know what our future holds, especially with what's going on in our country. We have to be very, very cautious about it. This, these numbers that we put together for a budget is just a balanced budget. Again, I'm gonna go back to this. We don't have any, any animosity toward anybody. There is nothing here that is personal. We have a certain amount of revenue. And we know we have expenses. The revenue has to cover the expense. Where do we cut? That's a conversation that needs to be had. And I will, I will remind you again that I have asked repeatedly for conversations on the budget. And I'm going to ask again that the chief accommodate me on that in the next couple of weeks. We do need to have a conversation regarding where we're gonna find those particular items. Yes, chief?
I've been here 18 years historically. This this government and overseeing these budgets and operations are a corporate decision. They're not one individual's decision. I proposed a budget, you proposed a budget, and the governing body makes that decision. Me as an individual, I don't get to say, here's my wish list, and this is specifically what I demand. I have to give, and I am always willing to give. But what I can understand is, why are we not having tabletop discussions like we used to historically? Being transparent, open it to the public, throw your department heads up here, have all the council here, Being transparent, open it to the public, throw your department heads up here, have all the council here, and we all have a discussion, not a one-on-one. We corporately have a discussion because when it comes down to it, that decision is solely based on that governing body of those officers. It's not your decision, nor is it mine. Ultimately, it is theirs and that's the understanding I have. So in the future, I would strongly encourage that we all have a conversation together corporately. Invite the public like we used to. I mean, we did that for years. Uh, Gerald knows that. I know for a fact we and him did that. And, uh, I found that to be way more productive. That way I can look at fire chief and say, well, I need this, you need this. Well, you know what? I work with you. I know you need that more. I, 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 I agree. I agree with you getting that, but we're not doing that. We're, we're sitting here wanting, expected to go one-on-one and, and it's no disrespect to you, ma'am, but I'm not. Just, I'm a team player. I was a soldier and I was always trained. There's no I in team. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Yes, sir.
I just want to comment. I was just a little concerned with the idea that, um, we're going to spur economic growth, but in the meantime, we'll, we'll, we'll cut the general, we'll use less of the general fund. And then when the economic growth comes, it'll fill up the general fund again, then we'll hire up our cops. But I'm kind of concerned because as the economy grows, the other expenses are going to grow too, which in four years, we're going to be in the same place saying, well, we wanted to hire more cops, but all these other expenses grew up too. So we're in the same kind of thing. We can't pull apart and sorry. And now there's more people and still less cops in a smaller ratio and then you get yourself in trouble. So I'm a little concerned with that.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else? Yes, sir.
Also like to add too, like it seems like we're catering towards the, uh, ballfields and the anonymous letter. Who, the anonymous person is anonymous and not here, but all these people here are showing up saying, this is what we want. We're taking time off our day to say, we want cops. Where is the ballfield people? They're staying anonymous. I know it's important, but we want to be safe. That's what we're saying.
Any other comments? Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Alan Wisehample and I lived in Iowa since 1992. So I've been here for a little while. And from what I'm listening to, you have put together a balanced budget. Am I correct?
Correct.
All right. And by state law, you need to present a balanced budget by the end of this month.
Correct.
Okay. If you have a balanced budget, everybody's not happy with it, obviously. And the major portion of it that people are not happy with is the reduction, not the defunding of the police. Because you're not, defunding means you take away all funds. That's not what is happening. It is a reduction. And it's terminology, but it's very, very important terminology. So with that in mind, I would make a suggestion that you go ahead and pass this budget. And then after having a meeting and chief, I think it's a great idea.
They have to leave.
Yeah, but I'm saying, absolutely. For the idea that within two short weeks, you get together, you get together with everyone who needs to be.
Everybody.
And so we can say, we're going to have the best police department we can possibly have. Understand, I've only been here since 92, but prior to that, I was connected with a police work in a small town in Texas for eight years. Okay? So I understand you guys a little bit and I know what you go through and I've got a real heart for you. I've never met an overpaid cop unless he was on tape. I hope you're all underpaid and you're really hard. And the town needs to recognize that and do the best we can for you. But we're asking you to do the best you can for us.
Absolutely.
And so that's my comment and that's my suggestion that tonight, if you can, go ahead, pass the budget as it is. But with the caveat that we're going to set a meeting up with the idea that we're going to look at what is requested and what's required to improve the police department. And so when the excess funds come in, the first place we're going to look to put those funds is in the police department. Not on the baseball field, not in something else, but in the police department. Thank you.
Thank you, young man.
Hello. My name is Ashley Johnson. Everybody calls me AJ. Anyway, I'm not a resident of Iowa. However, um, I am a former, I'm a former probation and parole officer for Calhoun Parish, but also for ATC as well recently. And I don't know if I have the right ready to weigh in on some, some things, but I do want to say this. I was the supervising agent for Iowa with the state ATC. And I want to say back in, I don't know, maybe November, I ended up busting a petrol station, uh, it's called Gas Trap for illegal vapes. And with those illegal vapes, I found, I want to say it was like 10,000, um, cannabis vapes, which of course are illegal. I say these things to say that ATC right now is in the process of making a whole bunch of tasks force right now across the state. And we need local PVs to be able to be there, you know? Because one, local PVs have played a huge role in being that, that bridge between, you know, a state cops and then your constituents. And I recall that particular bust that I was in charge of, that took me three days to do. Um, taking the evidence, counting the evidence and then, you know, me writing up the reports and what have you. And Iowa is a lovely town, but I remember that we only had one officer locally who was actually able to come out. But he wasn't even really able to stay there much. But I want you to know that things are becoming more and more dire as far as these illegal vapes, um, in cannabis and, uh, how do you say? Uh, create them and everything is concerned. Like the governor is not playing about it. And so with that being said, it's just kind of one of those things where I, I, I'm not a figures person, but I just want to make sure I advocate because, um, again, I know I'm coming from state, but these are my brothers and my sisters in blue, you know? And these people here, your constituents and everything like that, I have a sworn duty to protect them as well. And I want to be able to do that in tandem, be it with the state, be it with Iowa Police Department. But I also, because I believe in Iowa Police Department, I want to make sure that I, again, just kind of advocate for that. Um, because there is some, some stuff coming down the pipe right now with some bills that are about to be, you know, put up to vote. And, and, and Governor Landry is really taking a hard line stance on these sorts of, on these sorts of things. And to have the manpower there would be awesome. I've had people wanting to fight me, wanting to kill me over illegal vapes. And it's a scary notion that I may not make it home to my daughter because a business owner wanted to hit me up and we didn't have the manpower to back us. And I just want to make sure that you understand that I'm not trying to slight you or disrespect any of you in this community or anything like that. But, um, if, if it helps just to add a wee bit of, uh, we see, what's it called? Uh, a little bit of perspective, if you will, that that's just kind of what I'm going to do.
Good to see you.
Very good to see you. Yes, ma'am.
Good to see you.
Happy to help people. All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. All right, at this point, uh, I guess we're going to close our budget hearing. We're going to move into the public hearing regarding, um, uh, ordinance, uh, establishing for the adjustment of water and sewer bills due to municipal error, natural disaster or pre-approved exceptional water usage and otherwise provide with respect thereon two. Um, I know that there has been, um, some folks who have kind of put out into the general public that this year is for us to raise your water rates. This is a complete fabrication. Um, no, no other way to put it. Basically what this is, if y'all recall back during the freeze, I did an emergency declaration. That emergency declaration was to allow me to, um, or allow the town to actually adjust water rates based on you running your water. And we would adjust your rates based on the average use. And that way we could reduce that amount that you would be, uh, dripping because we want to protect the infrastructure that we have there. That's basically what this ordinance does. It gives us that ability. So simply, if you wish to fill your swimming pool, you can call us. We can go out there, we can read the meter. You fill your swimming pool, you call us when you done, we look at that and we say, okay, we don't have to charge you sewer on that. Okay? So that saves you money. That's what this is all about with that ordinance. It has nothing to do with raising rates. I will remind you that, uh, it was re, it was actually, they suggested that we put in a, a fee schedule. I guess it was some sort of a percentage that we could increase your rates at any time over the year. And I said, no, because that needs to be put to the, the folks. It's your money. We're not here to, to make money off of the citizens. We're here to provide a service. We need to make sure that we have the necessary means to provide that service. And we're going to do what we can to make sure that in a, in the event, uh, where we have an emergency, that we are able to, um, take exception to your water bill when there is a definite problem. Okay? So that's what this is all about. And so, um, and the second thing is the ordinance of not being an operating budget. So any questions or comments on those ordinances? We can start with the, um, the adjustment of water and sewer bills. Any questions? Counsel, anything? Y'all good with it? What's your thought? Um, on the public hearing? Uh, we're, we're just having a, a public hearing on it. It's, it's questions and comments. Right? So, um, any, any, any specific questions on that?
Yeah, these were introduced at the last meeting.
Yeah, they were introduced. So we're going to be, we're going to be, we'll be among those. All right, the second one is the ordinance for the adoption of the operating budget. Any other questions? Okay. At this point, we'll close our public hearing and we'll be an hour and a half. We did good. Um, call it a work, uh, if you don't mind, we're going to go through and establish a court. Mr. Gerald Gidry. Mr. Daniel Henigan, here. Mr. Vanessa Gelleri.
Here.
Mr. Joe Becknell.
Here.
And Mr. Julie Futter.
Here.
And we have established a court. At this point, we're going to stand, if you don't mind, and we're going to, uh, have Mr. Joe do our invitation, follow up our pledge.
Pledge by your heads. Lord, we ask for your peace, fulfill our need, helping us to stay focused and productive. May our discussions be created through our clarity, respect and a desire to find creative solutions.
I'm glad to lead you to the life of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You made me see it? At this time, we have, um, next time is going to be to adopt the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add Chief Wesson to the master's agenda.
Second. To add him to the agenda for?
To discuss, uh, the, um, budget that we have proposed.
Promotions are, I move to amend again to have a discussion of promotions and having an addition for.
Is that acceptable to you, Ms. Julie?
All in favor? Any votes? Did we have a sustain? I didn't hear. You didn't say anything, you sustain?
Say you're ready.
Okay, all right. Okay. All right, so we're going to, the council has agreed to amend by full vote uh, to add chief to come and speak about, um, the proposed raises as well as new hires. I believe is what you, what you were talking about. Okay? All right. I move to adopt the amended agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is that unanimous? All right. Approval of minutes is submitted for regular meeting, May 12th, uh, 2025. I move to amend the minutes. Struck my name from the last paragraph from the last page and I had Julie Futter. I was absent. All in favor?
Aye.
And that's unanimous? All right. All right, so the first thing we have on our list is a motion and adoption of ordinance 2025-02 and ordinance establishing for the adjustment of water and sewer bills due to municipal error, natural disaster or pre-approved exceptional water usage and otherwise provide with respect thereon two.
Make that motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any votes? All right, that motion carries. Um, let's go ahead and do, uh, chief at this point before we get to number two.
Uh, I'll first say thank all of you. Uh, for amending the budget, I will go forward with my recommendations. What's your recommendation to promote, uh, Jason Rockoff from Captain of Major? Uh, Bubba? Can I read them all? What do you want?
It's, it's up to this question, the council and stuff, how they do it.
Would you mind just reading through all the promotions and then we can talk about if we need to or whatever? And then that goes on and on.
That's correct. Jason Rockoff, Captain of Major, whiskey warriors, lieutenant to captain, Austin Pellet and staff sergeant and acting, acting executive officer, the full executive officer lieutenant. Matt Dusset, detective sergeant to detective sergeant. Seth Weinstein for patrolman to sergeant and STO. Taylor Mauer for patrolman to patrolman first class. Austin Sonnier, who just graduated, the captain and has been scheduled to promote to patrolman first class. Uh, those are the promotions. And then on the next, I have the hires, recommendation.
Oh, I'm sorry. Trump, uh, Matthew said sergeant to staff sergeant, Whitstein, uh, to patrolman first class and STO. Is that correct?
Yes. He's a patrolman with a lot of experience and we don't have STOs. And we, we, you know, and I got to, we need for, we need to get him for, for that purpose. He has to have that authority. Thank you.
Promotions, no questions asked, easy peasy. The only thing that I'll throw out there, I get the promotions and I think we're under staff, so we got to hire some people. I'm happy to, to at least give my voice to that. The only, the awkward part of it is we're in a budget fight. You guys have to figure out exactly.
Well, we're, you know, fairness, we're dealing with this budget here and now, correct? And the funds are the, I can't make these recommendations without proper funding. Here and now, we're in this existing budget and I have plenty of funds to cover this for here and now. And I deal in the here and now because my understanding is we're going to be on the agenda to discuss next year's budget front of me, I'm at regardless.
Y'all are going to have a good meeting.
We are having a fantastic meeting.
I move to promote Captain Rockoff to Major. I'll do them all.
I, I read them all. If you want to go ahead and just, uh.
Do you mind if I ask a question before we go through this? Do, do we not have a handbook policy that requires folks to be on, uh, employed 90 days before we give raises? raises? It's just a simple question.
Which one are you referring to? I don't know, let's say being here 90 days.
There are two here.
Which one?
Hang on a second. We have one that's been here two and a half months to date, that would be Austin Pellican. And we have.
He's already, okay, go ahead.
Seth Whitstein, not yet eligible. That may be his 90 days. Would Pellican's be his part-time hire day or his full-time hire day?
I don't know, he's reading the policy. I have a different policy.
I'm not reading the policy, this is the paperwork that I asked you for. So these, these, these are just a portion, this is actually the raises that I asked you to give me. So I don't know. So between the raises, those were $26,000 and change, and I know the new hires are going to be, with everything, including the benefits, all total with these, you're looking at $322,000. I would just say, at that point, at 1.6 on our budget that we have, if we approve this, what we're going to have is 1.9 and change. So at this point, if you're willing to go ahead and to amend or to not have a discussion at all about a balanced budget, this is a time to go ahead and move this through. See, that's, but that's, that's not completely fair, because the budget can be balanced in other ways. So again, that's through conversation, through conversation.
Again, we're here, we're talking about the existing budget. Existing budget.
Chief, I really appreciate your fight for your, for what you're doing. I really do. I don't mean any ill will here. I have asked very, very specifically to have conversations at length about what we're having to do for the town to get us out of the problems that we've had in the past. I am going to go, I am going to refer you back to a conversation that I had in email to you. In conclusion, without meaningful conversation, I am left to request a line item budget for the police department. The same request that Councilman Daniel asked you for the day I was missing from the only council meeting back in January, he asked you for that same line item. And I asked for you to give it to us, give it to me no later than March 31st of 2025. I said, I also expect that discussions to be held in April, should you deem them necessary. I've not heard the first thing from you. Furthermore, after two years of research of other departments, I expect the budget to be 1.6 million or less.
You never received any emails?
There's been no, there's been, there's been no communication on that. This has been a habit, if my understanding of the Larson Act is correct, we could have, we could have some differences on that, but again, I think this is a conversation that you and I need to have at length when it comes to this. We look at council meeting February 12th of 2024. You have promotions effective dates. And these effective dates were for January. Council meeting March 11th, 2024. You had new hires. Effective dates was February.
Mm-hmm, yes.
Council meetings, every one of these came through, and not the first time did anybody say, hey, Mayor, we're going to be doing this. Part of the, part of the Larson Act, it says, so we don't have surprises, or we don't have the issues that we have with our budget, it's to get a provisional. I have never denied a provision, but I have very seldom been asked for a provision. I'm not, I'm not sitting up here to, to air dirty laundry. I am simply stating, it's going to be a whole lot easier if we work together than for all this to continue to go in circles. I really, really, when I, when I look at this, that $322,000 increase from what you sent to me on Monday night to add to an agenda we were putting out on Tuesday, because I wanted to give the townsfolk plenty of time to look at what we had. It took me two more days to go through this and to meet with folks about where we were I declined putting you on the agenda, because this was a surprise. This surprise makes us have to go back and go through all our work again. I don't mind the work, but we've had, I've asked for 15 months for us to sit down and have a conversation about how we can get where we need to go.
Finish, I would like to respond when you let, when you're done.
And I know, I know that it is, it's the decision of the council. I am okay with it. But will I tell you what? I follow my rules and regulations, and it'd be nice if other folks were too. And I'm going to leave it at that.
Just like how I had to be requested to add to the agenda, you follow in your rules.
I'm sorry, say that again?
Just like this statute that I had to request him to let me come up here and make recommendations, you follow in that statute as well. I responded to you.
I am.
There you are, that's why I'm here. I responded to you in numerous emails. I specifically asked you to do a tabletop historically, and to know about you ignore what I respond to. So it's, it's moot, dude. We both have our communication on emails, and I can go back and look at all your, the emails I got from you, and I ain't even, I'm not into that. I'm into just the facts. The facts are, we're short, and we need to replace these people, and we need adequate, adequate, adequate trained leaders to step up. You're, you're inflating that number, because you're not deducted, we lost a lieutenant that retired, and none of these salaries are comparable to paying that salary. So you're not taking any deficiencies or any deductions out of what we're paying these guys versus some of them that left at higher salaries. You're not doing that. These patrolmen aren't starting at the wages that of the officers we left, it's less. So you're not factoring any of that in. I factored it in. It's common sense.
You don't have to sit down with a calculator. Do you, do you understand that when we, when we go through the budget, we operate from where we're at, not from where we were? All those numbers that we have brought forward in that budget are current. We're not operating off of something that you've had in the past. These are all current numbers. These are, these are audited numbers, if you wish to, again, go back and say that, you know, pie charts has no room in our world, those are audited numbers, legislatively audited numbers. It says, these are correct. It would be foolish of me to use numbers that are inflated, are not correct, in order to promote an idea. This is dollars and cents, it's the numbers, that's all it is. But I will tell you this. Whatever the council chooses to do is up to the council.
Exactly.
I have said that from day one, but I'm going to tell you, we have to, at some point, have an ability to sit down and have a conversation about what matters for this town.
Yeah.
And if, if, if you want it done here, I can do it here. I can do, oh.
If you'd like me to print out all your emails and let.
That's fine, I don't have, I don't have a problem.
I'm not into the gossip.
I'm not, I'm not.
We're here, and now, a past is a past.
All right, so continue on with where you're at.
Done, and let's get our people started.
Continue on with where you're at, and the council will make a decision based on that. I move to promote Jason Rockoff from Captain de Major, Christie Horace from Lieutenant de Captain, Austin Pellican, pending Mr. Bukke's approval, from Staff Sergeant, Acting XO to Lieutenant XO, Matthew Seid from Detective Sergeant to Detective Staff Sergeant, Seth Whitstein from Patrolman to Sergeant slash FTO, Kevin Lauer from Patrolman to Patrolman First Class, Austin Sonnier from Patrolman to Patrolman First Class.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you. Now, I'll go on with our new hire roster, we're all starting at patrolmen, and we're blessed to get the experience, and I will look at that budget and promote them accordingly too, the way they perform their tasks. I am making a recommendation to these employees based on pending the results of their tests. And what that means is sometimes they don't pass the test, so all of these people might not even get hired. This process is very long, it's not like just pulling someone off the street, you have to go through a lot of testing, background information, it's very complex, and it's very hard to get police officers, and like that guy said, we don't want to let them go, and they're not coming back. We've lost them, we've lost two to Westlake, because we cut HSA, and they went over there and got their HSA. I mean, we, you know, and we're not even talking about all these benefits we've been saving the last three years, because we cut benefits to employees. My budget, Chief, included that.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but if you want us to hire some people, tell us who you want us to hire.
I'm sorry. I appreciate that. I mean, he can speak like that, but I can't, and I apologize. Josh McCoy, Trey Lauer, Marshall Menard, Tyler Jackson, and Agent Johnson, all recommendation pending the results of their tests for hire, full-time.
If, if full staff is eight patrol officers, I don't, I'm going off the number, there's four or five.
That's what we discussed.
Right. Can we say, can we get approval for you to hire thirty in the short term, and then after you guys have that, that, that meeting, that follow-up, we have a clear idea of the budget, go from there. Also, the LT has, has a point.
Marshall Menard declined to offer employment due to the pay, so he's on the list, he's on the list, we can sit, but not since that conversation, then he said, bye.
So that's McCoy, Lauer, Lowes, sorry, Lauer, Jackson.
And Asia. This is purely the results, so, I mean.
And that would, that would put.
I, I, I say based on.
At eight.
That would be where we need to be anyway.
Right.
That's what we discussed. That would make, if they are, you know.
Right. Best case scenario, it puts eight people on the road, two per shift.
Correct. Patrol, yes.
As far as investing money, I know you have to do the background check, and you got to send them to school and all that.
And we've already spent that.
Okay, so it's in your budget.
We've already spent that on.
On these guys.
Yes, ma'am.
That's what I'm here to do.
Pending testing results, I move to hire Joshua McCoy, Trey, I'm sorry, I don't remember, Lauer?
Lauer.
Sorry. Trey Lauer, Taylor Jackson, Asia Johnson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Okay, number two. Chief, is that it?
All right, just to remind you all, I'll be brief. The police memorial went well, appreciate those, thank you, Vanessa, and thank you, Mayor, for your, what you call that? Your proclamation, very nice, appreciate it. Upcoming senior barbecue to be held Thursday, June 19th, at the KC Hall, for our senior citizens, we do this every year, from nine to one, I invite all of you, and thank the KCs for always supporting that every year, to help feed our seniors. That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. I'm going to assume y'all want to skip over to you at this point? I mean, we're $322,000 into this, so, I mean, how do you want to go?
I know I'm going to vote, I've been going to vote this way for six weeks, so I can make the motion and then vote, I'm going to vote, or Mr. Bukke.
Okay, we'll, we'll make the motion to adopt ordinance 2025-03, an ordinance adopting an operating budget and revenues and expenditures for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2024. So.
So.
All in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
So we got three nays?
Can we, can we have a, can we have a roll count, please?
Three.
Nay. So three nays?
Yes.
Uh, let's see, Daniel.
All right, you got that percentage?
Yes, yes.
Okay, I'm agreeing, motion to approve statement of work between Town of Highway and City Plus LLC for the purpose of a full service supplementation subscription for the Town of Highway code of ordinances. Any questions on that? So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. Number four, motion to approve cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the County Parish Police Jury and the Town of Highway for the public purpose of assisting in the summer feeding program. They, we are waiting, are we still waiting on the contract?
No, it's, it's in the, yes, sir.
So all we need to do is do the approval on that for the summer feeding program.
I move to approve the CEA between County Parish Police Jury and the Town of Highway for the summer feeding program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Number five is a motion to approve the cooperative endeavor agreement by and between the combined anti-drug team CAT and Town of Highway for public purposes outlined in the memorandum of understanding beginning July 1st, 2024 through June 28th, 2028. The difference here is that we do have a MOU in place. What they're trying to do is to put this to where it coincides for the same coverage. It would be a four-year deal, so we wouldn't have to come back to this year after year. We do not have a copy of it in writing for us at this point, they're waiting on it from legal. I would recommend that we approve this based on it setting well with our attorney.
I've got to have looked at the documents eventually, but we did not get the final copy, so if it's the same, I anticipate I can approve it, from what I think it's been said, but we haven't done it yet, but that would be appropriate, from what it's seen.
Pity final approval from Mr. Bukke, I move to approve the CEA between the CAT team, combined anti-drug team, and Town of Highway for public purposes outlined in the memorandum of understanding, beginning July 1st, 2024 through June 28th, 2028.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And it carries. All right. We have a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, folks, appreciate y'all coming out.